Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. If anybody does not have an agenda and would like one, they are behind Steve O'Quinn. If you could raise your hand.
I'm off.
We're all gone. And I think there are some things being handed out. Before we go any farther though, I am going to ask everybody to stand. I'm going to ask Councilor Donald to please make a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up is community notes. Community notes is a time where if anybody has something they would like to talk about or tell us about or comment on that is not already scheduled to be discussed tonight, now would be the time to do it. And if you do, we just ask you come to the podium and give your name and tell us where you live.
You're good? Steve O'Quinn, I live on Tyconic Street. And I saw something yesterday that I think that the council should be aware of and that everyone here should be aware of and especially that our police officers should be aware of. A young man who I know from that neighborhood came over to talk to me yesterday and I asked him, he was saying, "Out of trouble." And he said, "Well, kinda, but I've got it just in case." This is an 18-year-old carrying around a nine-millimeter Glock with a clip fully engaged. And that's what happened when the law got passed and said, "Oh, you can just go get a gun." And this is going to happen more and who's going to be at risk most? Those gentlemen back there. And I think we have to be aware of that. I don't want 18-year-olds with no experience with firearms and a rebellious spirit carry around a nine-millimeter Glock. Why? Why? There's no sense of that. And you love 18-year-olds, but there's no guarantee that that kid is responsible. There's no guarantee that that child is responsible. And he's got that Glock in his waist.
Is there anybody else for community notes? Hello?
Counselors, Mayor Isgraw, Candace Savinelli, To Ashley Terrace, Waterville, Maine. I being a business owner in this town and a resident of this town, I received my tax valuation. Okay? I'm wondering if, after reviewing my taxes, my house was assessed for $275. I'm wondering if the tax evaluation was shifted from residential to residential from business buildings?
Yes, and from a couple of small pockets of residential areas whose values had been increased.
Because I noticed what business buildings were assessed for and what my house was assessed for, I would gladly trade. Thank you.
Anybody else for community notes? Counselor?
I want to echo some sentiments where I know are the majority of people that are here on the valuation that was just done. So, just some things I want to go over. Community-wide tragedy has taken place here just recently. Like a solid brick being dropped from a 10-story commercial building on the top of our residential heads, the effect has been both depressing and disturbing in the highest degree imaginable. Although this is not a municipal tax increase, it is, it has been clearly referenced by, it is a direct surprise attack on middle-income Americans. Here in Waterville, Maine, my neighborhood in Ward 4 has been affected so dramatically it is in comparison to being termed scorched earth. Literally like a wildfire burning out of control, property valuation statements came to mailboxes and defied residential taxpayers' census to the tune of hundreds of more dollars in taxes based upon this year's new property valuation analysis. And an overwhelming shift of taxes from commercial to residential sawback still aching from a high tax mill rate as a result of intensive borrowing and spending from the last decade. Although some embrace the notion, "I'm happy to know what my home is now worth and feel it is appropriate," the overwhelming majority cry foul in every sense of the word as this business firm's calculations on arriving and assessing property values, in my opinion, and hundreds more very dissatisfied constituents see and feel it is grossly disproportionate in so many realistic scenarios. As we all scratch our collective heads and grapple to understand the conclusions of these findings that authorize the shocking rise in our tax bills, I have personally fielded upwards of 50 phone calls and emails from enraged constituents demanding us to know why. And all I repeat, all have submitted to seriously contemplating selling and moving to a more tax-friendly community. I share their outrage. My rise in valuation would cost me an extra $1,300, my next-door neighbor $1,800, and I know of some upwards to $2,500, which is absolutely a suffocation to a broad spectrum of taxpayers that have been forced to carry the weight of the city's tax burden to this date. It is inconceivable from every facet of every neighborhood, the administration and this council, that we can sustain this type of taxation onslaught and not see a potential mass exodus on our hands. A constituent who is one of the top realtors at Century 21 had discussion with me in noting that he is having serious difficulty selling property in Waterville, sees a rise in foreclosures and significant anxieties from clients as to the realities of our oppressive high tax mill rate. I had an 87-year-old constituent call me living on Violet Avenue to say she has lived in Waterville all her life and now cannot afford or even imagine where she could find the extra money in her very limited fixed income budget to pay for this new property valuation as incurred. I say, if I had the authority, I would rip this new property valuation up in millions of little pieces and burn it with satisfaction. I personally apologize to my constituents for the excruciating pain that we now are enduring. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you. My name's Norton Weber. I live at 31st Ringway. I didn't realize that this was the time to do it.
Well, if we're going to start talking about the, I realize there's kind of a gray area between the budget and the re-balance because there...
Yeah, I've got, first of all, I think I spoke with Mike Roy earlier about the city's debt load. And I see we borrowed between three-year parity, borrowed $12 million. Well, that's not the answer to the question. I'd like to know what the entire debt load is. And I'd also like, well, I asked him at the time, he didn't know.
We have somebody here who can answer that.
Okay, well, I think we ought to, I think we ought to pay off our debt. I don't have any debt at home. I own my home. I think the city should be in the same situation. I think any money that's spent for things that are not necessary, I won't use the word frivolous, that aren't necessary, I think should be avoided. I'm also going to recommend that we cap the mill rate at 15. I wished I brought my paint and just signed. I could have got a lot of signatures right here. And if I am going to go downtown and stand and say, "Do you live in Waterville? Would you like to cap the mill rate at 15?" How many people do you think would not sign? It's a good indication, and I know this is budget-wise because that, the mill rate, is what decides the budget. Now, I also, I'd like to say, as someone who is a homeowner, one of the things that, I'm going to have about $600 added to my taxes, but the thing is that in the last year we've spent, if anybody's driven by our house, we spent probably $15,000 to $20,000 fixing it up. Now, that's a good thing for local business. But, you know, some might be getting a little discouraged in not, you know, wanting to fix their property up and things like that. But I feel like that my house, if you'll pardon the expression, was a gift from God and I have to be a good steward of that thing that has been allowed us to live in. So, I'd really like to see a more realistic budget. I don't, you know, the walk in the park down by the waterway, things like that, I'm sorry, they're lovely. We need to figure out a way to revitalize this town. In 2000, the former mayor, who is now governor, and I sat down when he was the director of the Maine Homeless Shelter, and we decided that since, in 2000, 10,000 jobs were gone. That was in 2000. These are jobs, Hathaway, Scott, this place and the other, jobs that are a living wage job. Got to figure out a way, you know, to revitalize the town. And I know I've taken off a lot of time and I appreciate the opportunity. And I'll expect to have a thing to sign about tapping the mill rate, but anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. And anybody who wants to talk about taxes, probably we should hold that to the very first item on the unfinished business, which is the override of the mayor's veto. That would be the time to come up and have that discussion. So we'll have that in just a moment. So if anybody has anything they would like to talk about that is not on the agenda, now would be the time. Mr. St. Peter.
How are you doing? Mayor St. Peter. I'm Weber. I think about a year ago, we had a meeting about the waterfront, you know, what are we going to do with it? And, you know, horse stables and walkways and butterfly paths, and it all sounded good. And, you know, I was, we borrowed, I mean, how much money did we borrow to put infrastructure down there for economic development? How much was it?
$250.
$250?
$250,000.
So $1 million, $250,000.
Even more.
So anyways, it's a great place. You know, and I think foresight to build infrastructure, like I'm doing with my business, you know, I bought a piece of property and I own stuff that, quite honestly, I really can't afford. But I'm thinking in the future that I'm going to grow and expand and, I don't know if anybody saw my pile of wood on KMD, I outgrew my site pretty quickly and now I've got more room. I'm hoping I'll outgrow that in a few years. But, point is, you have, I believe you have to have infrastructure for growth. And sometimes you've got to borrow money to do that. So, you know, I'm not saying we shouldn't borrow the money to do it, but what I am saying is, and I'll say this emphatically, everybody here, present and future, and you know who you are, we have had opportunities, the city has had opportunities, and flat-out turned them down to do stuff down there. And it's a damn sin. It's a sin to waste money and let it sit there. Nobody in this country would take $1.2 million and put it in their bank account and get negative returns. You wouldn't do it. You'd be called stupid and you'd be fired if that was your job. You would be fired. No investment person would make any money if that's what they were doing with the money that people gave them to invest with. So, let's move forward. Purnell Field, great opportunity for Waterville, for the kids, for, you know, the organizations that are presented with it, and it's an awesome thing. I think, you know, baseball's good. Everybody likes baseball. But how inconvenient is it to have a baseball field with all these out-of-town families coming in off the interstate and going onto Matthew's Ave? So they're going to punch in, you know, 166 Matthew's Ave and find a parking spot and go to a baseball game, and then they're going to get back on the interstate and they're going to leave. Maybe they'll stop at the Silent Woman or whatever it was called the last year. Oh, that's going on. The point is, Ken Walsh, I asked him, I said, "Why wouldn't we go down, Ken, why wouldn't you go down to the riverfront and put that down there?" He goes, "Oh, well, we approached it for two years and they turned us down."
That matter never came before this council, I can tell you that.
Well, I did, and I practiced this conversation with present and the past council. I don't know who was here when it was asked. Mike was here, and Mike knew about it.
Which project?
The Purnell Field.
We never got, there was never an offer, a bona fide offer presented to the city.
Did you, did the city not have any informal or formal discussions with Ken Walsh about putting a little bit complex a field down ahead of falls?
Yes, of course, we did.
We did.
I thought your concern was about whether we put any money into it, which we had not.
We moved on past the money that we borrowed and how we haven't done anything with the money.
It was never presented to the city.
Wait a second. He just said it, they talked about it.
We talked about it with the Alphondu Center, our rec people did.
Have it down there.
It's not a city project, it's an Alphondu Center project.
But they could have put that field down there.
If they present a viable, I will say this, though. A lot of times, people come up with great ideas and they go to Mike, and Mike says, "Great, put it in writing, you've got to bring it to the council." It never makes it past that. This is just one of those cases, I'm sorry to tell you, that never was presented to the council.
The city said, "We'd love to have it, but bring some stuff to us," and they said, and they just never turned up again? Or I was told, I was told that there wasn't enough room down there by Mike. Mike said, "There's not enough room down there for a baseball field."
Ahead of falls.
Ahead of falls. Well, that's what we've been talking about, the whole head of falls.
Remember, we spent $1.25 billion in pretty moderate sewer. So why would you put recreation field there if you had that investment?
So people can go to the bathroom and get drinks while they're walking there. So, so that, you know, because sports brings people into towns. I mean, I vote, I vote places for my kids and we go, we go towns.
It's the Alphondu Center's decision, it was not our decision. If they chose to go somewhere else, that is not our fault that they chose to go somewhere else.
I didn't say it was your fault. I said, I was told, and I still believe this, that it was not explored or gone forward because the city squashed it and said, whoever in the city, there's not enough room for it down there, we don't want it. So, and even if I'm wrong, which I don't think I am, but I can't prove it, let's do something with that to make some money. You know? Let's do something with that. You can't sit on $1.2 million for how many years then? Eight? You just, you just can't do it. Listen, if you don't got a plan, if you don't got, if you don't got a plan to succeed, you're going to fail. And that's what, that money, we failed with that money. And now we're paying, we're paying back the debt.
Good evening. My name is Don Dunfor. I was councillor for Ward 5 and also on the school board, Ward 5. And when I was elected, my first year, Nelson Mador, who was the mayor at the time, had a vision for the property across the street, the department hall. And that vision was to build it up, put the infrastructure in, and make it a tax-paying entity. One that would enrich the city of Waterville downtown and make it more viable. Unfortunately, that has not come to fruition at this point. Waterville Development Corporation was put together at that time to help to do this and to make it happen. Unfortunately, they were kind of sidetracked because of the issues that were happening with Hathaway. The issue was, well, do we keep Hathaway, tear it down, or make it more viable? They turned their attention to that. And apparently it worked. Unfortunately, across the street, it went away for some reason, and I don't know why. Because that was their main focus. The main focus of that development corporation was to help the city of Waterville to have more businesses come in and to develop it. I don't know what they have done since then. I guess I would probably ask them a few questions and try to find out what's going on with that, with that deal. I'm frankly disappointed in it because I was on their board at inception, and I was very excited about it, and many councillors on board, as well as school board members also, was as well. It was a good idea. It was one that captured a lot of the talent within the area, a lot of businessmen and businesswomen. But it just hasn't happened at this point. Now, that's my first address. My second thing I'd like to talk to you about is, first of all, this council and the school board and you and the mayor, as well as all the department heads, have done their due diligence and worked on this budget. You have decreased the budget. So you have done a lot of that work. Unfortunately, the issue is the revaluations. That is the main issue here that you're dealing with, that we are dealing with, I am dealing with because I have a very large increase in the property tax, which hasn't really been settled yet because only got my letter until the first week of August. But you're already in the process of doing the budget and appropriating the budget, and you're doing it under tight constraints because of state law and you're staying there. However, it's unfair to the taxpayers of the city for this to happen at this time. The least out of this whole thing that you should do is to take this revaluation, let it go forward, but apply it to next year. So people have the opportunity to appeal it and go through the process. Because right now, this is unfair. It's like telling somebody who's on chemotherapy that your medication is $100 right now, but hey, something's changed, you're up to $2,500 bucks. This is totally unfair. You should address that and address that immediately. Thank you.
Anybody else for community notes?
Can I ask to actually speak on the budget? Because it seems that everyone for me has been talking about the budget. So it seems maybe that all the community notes are going to be...
If there's anybody else, no, is the answer. If there's anybody else that has something to say that there's no on the budget, or I guess even at this point, re-balance, because the two are getting a little blended, now would be the time to do it. And if it has anything to do with the budget and the re-balance, I will stop you. Yes. Please tell us your name and where you live.
That's right, I'm Charlie O'Tarris. Could sit up here and complain, but I'm not going to. So, all I'm going to ask is, you're all here because you care about the city and you're supposed to be representing everybody here and everyone that's not here. Your whole, when you were running for your campaign was, "Don't spend money unless you have it."
Chris, I would ask that you just wait till the budget conversation gets...
I'm not going to talk about the budget. All I'm going to say is, can you, please not think about little things and, it's the taxpayers' money everybody's spending and you're putting people out of their homes. I don't want to talk about the budget, it's going to be ridiculous.
Bruce White, Silvermont Street, Waterville. I guess this is kind of a gray area, but could we limit debate to a certain amount of time for each speaker as we move forward?
Hi, my name is Sandy Sullivan and I live on Fieldstone Drive. We had, our community had a meeting with our Ward 5 representative yesterday. And thank you very much for that. I myself was stunned when I heard that 30% of the property in Waterville is tax exempt. And seeing that the tax burden is now shifting from business to residential, that means 70% of the taxpayers in Waterville are supporting all of Waterville. I don't understand, I don't understand tax exempt. I don't understand how these people, can I be tax exempt? I mean, I don't understand how all these people have not paid taxes when they are using all of the Waterville services and apps.
I'm going to move on to the approval of the consent agenda. All right, I got a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Now we're going to start with unfinished business, which is Resolution 135-06.
Move to a doc.
And this is where we'll start the debate. The debate will occur up here first. I actually have a few words I would like to say, and I'm sure the council will have some conversation on this, and then we will open the floor for debate. When we do that, I will ask, I hate to actually put timers on people, so I'm going to ask you to try to keep it within three to five minutes. If you can't do that, I might stop you, depending on what you have to say. We're going to try to take them there. We want everybody to have a turn to say their piece, and if at the end, people still have something they want to talk about, we will welcome you back up. But I want to make sure everybody gets a chance to be heard. But I also don't want to be staring at a stock block. I'd rather be listening to you when you speak.
Can I actually have a few words? Good evening, members of the council. I wanted to come up on this side tonight because I'd prefer just to speak to you more as a citizen than your mayor sometimes when I'm up there on something serious and we're kind of speaking side to side. It just feels a little formal and a lot less personal. I don't need to go into the last 10 to 20 years of Waterville's history, and it includes, as we just heard earlier, the closure of three mills, a housing market collapse, and the Great Recession that we're really still in. We've heard all those details, and I'm here to speak about the reality and the plight of a lot of our friends and neighbors right now in Waterville. And it is a blend of the property revaluation and also the budget. In 2014, the council began discussion of revaluing the properties in the city of Waterville. At the time, our elected officials, some of them spoke to us and told us that we were going to find out that Waterville's mill rate really wasn't that bad, that it would actually probably drop to around 20 to 22 were the numbers that were said and reported on at the time, and I remember coming to some of those meetings. Of course, that didn't happen. What happened was, the majority of residential homeowners had their properties increased significantly, but the mill only dropped to $24.5 per thousand of value. Families all over the city have found out that with one of the highest mill rates in the state of Maine, many are now wondering if they're going to be becoming financially insecure, or even worse, literally overnight, window to warning. I'd like to recall that the valuation was actually paid for out of a bond issue, which means we indebted the taxpayers' money and paid interest on it to pay for this. I recall in December of 2014, I stood before the council and pleaded not to pass that bond package. I think Councilor Mayhew was there as well. And my plea at the time was, "We don't know what next year's budget's going to be, and we're probably going to see tax increases." And the council voted anyway. It was a different makeup at the time, but I know the councillor who was most adamant about passing that vote and getting that bond passed is not, two of them are not, he's not even living in the city of Waterville anymore. He passed the bond and he moved out. So, that said, over a three-year period, the city did issue $12 million in bonds. I realize some of that was a refinance, that was actually a positive for the city, and some projects were needed because some were put off too long. That doesn't change the situation that we're in now. This year's budget actually includes about $350,000 of annual debt payment that we didn't have before from that final bond issue alone. And how some of the people who voted for that bond are telling me the budget is what it is, there's nothing we can do. All that aside, I'm not here to point fingers. Look, I'm sorry that you're... Look, I'm sorry that you're here during this time, this has fallen on your lap and I'm in it too. And, but I know that you're all capable of great things. And I don't think there's any easy answers. I'm not gonna pretend that we all haven't looked at that budget and said, jeez, I don't think that there's anything we can cut. But as I've looked at information over the last couple of weeks and I see that in the last five years, the city budget's gone up by, and I am focusing on expenditures. Because it's easy, you know, we talk about revenue sharing and I think some of us, including myself, have probably caught our eye off the ball because expenditures have actually increased by four million dollars in that time. So I'm asking if I've asked myself, if I asked the right questions of the right people. Because, you know, we can speak anecdotally about funding mandates from the states and a lot of that's true, but unless we can look at the taxpayers and say, here is exactly what that extra four million dollars cost to run the city and here's the price tag, we're not really speaking factually, including myself. I know that some of you are hard pressed to sustain the veto, but I'm gonna ask you to uphold the veto. And I'd ask that we launch into an investigation together to get some of these questions answered over the next couple of weeks. If not, why not? It's not really gonna hurt to at least find out where that extra expense went. Because certainly the city functioned okay before. I spoke with our assessor last week and he explained that incredibly large swaths of, includes thousands of homes are gonna be affected by the enormous increase because of the property revaluation. In one case, we have an entire neighborhood of people who are fifty-five plus. These people chose to take their retirement and invest in Waterville because they wanted to retire here. And what they're finding out is that most of their bills are going up about two thousand dollars apiece, at least literally overnight. Other neighborhoods where young and blue collar, middle-class families are living, we're gonna see similar increases of one to two thousand dollars. These increases are kinds of increases, if you think about it, people who are living on the edge, this is where they just walk away because they can't do it. To some point, you just need to put food on the table. If you talk about caring for the people in need, well, actions speak louder than words. Again, let's just take the time to really figure out and get honest answers about what's being spent in the city of Waterville, why it costs so much more to run the city today than it did just a few years ago. I asked our assessor if this property value move would mean that the few remaining people who are already paying the majority of residential tax would probably figure out that they're paying a lot more than the services that are taking and move out and leaving less and less people here with the ability to pay. And he said, Nick, that's a very real possibility. When the city last year repossessed more homes than I can remember due to back taxes, do we really want more people forced out with more unkept homes, more unmowed lawns, more empty buildings? I know we've talked about empty, a vacant building ordinance. You're certainly not gonna get vacant building fees from people who can't afford their taxes. You know, my taxes are going up, I know most of yours are too, you know, and it's gonna be tough. But I know in my house, we're gonna get through it. I'm thirty-four years old, we're gonna be fine. But I'm not here for me tonight. I'm here for the disabled veteran who lives on Tyconic Street, who's now wondering if he can still afford to live so close to the services that he needs. I'm here for the ninety-five-year-old widow on Abel Terrace who's budgeting her power bill and prescriptions and has decided that maybe if she leaves the temperature a little bit cooler this winter, she can probably make it through with these new bills. I'm here for the young family that just moved into a two-bedroom home on Violet Avenue to start their family. And now husband and wife are sitting at a kitchen table, wondering what's gonna happen when they need a car repair or a roof repair. These aren't anecdotal stories, they're not just a few bad examples. These are stories of real households. There are thousands of households here, these are real people living real lives. You know, one of my favorite films growing up was It's a Wonderful Life by Frank Capra. And I'm gonna steal a line here from the character George Bailey. It says, "These are the people who do most of the working in pain and living and dying in this community." I respectfully urge you to sustain the veto, let's get back to work together. Let's get the answers by digging deeper to make sure, at the very least, we have exhausted all of our resources before passing this final budget. Thank you very much. Now we move on to discussions on the council.
I just wanna say, I'm Steve Silvermore, one that I do heard from a lot of people in the last two weeks that it would be crazy to say that I didn't get the message loud and clear. I had about forty people talk with me, but I did have one, I can tell you to be honest, that only the thanking because they had a tax decrease. But, you know, I spoke to people too, just like, you know, like the mayor was saying that, you know, starting collecting social security twenty years ago, they get twelve hundred dollars a month and their taxes have gone up six hundred and fifty dollars. I had a person only that in the last four years, you know, in the last seven years, that had a four percent increase in their income and their taxes just went up thirty-three percent. But I mostly spoke to middle, you know, income people and they were very frustrated. But if there's one thing that I have experienced with at schools, and I ask you not to put all the burden on the schools, but not to blame the schools. I mean, I had people calling me and saying, we should just fire all the teachers and hire new ones at minimum wage. So it doesn't seem reasonable, but don't put the blame on the schools. I had the best job for thirty-three years being a teacher and it's a very difficult job and no one can say that they're overpaying. So the only thing that I ask you in this budget is to please think of everything, think of every department. Don't expect that one department can solve your problems. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I think it's important that we don't blame anybody in this process, including each other. I just, you know, when I, more we look at the numbers and see how much it's increased, I know I just can't look at each and every one of you and say, yep, we've had four million of increases, but here is the mandate, here's what's happened, and here's why. It looks tight when I look at it, but I think we need to get those questions answered. Other discussion on the council. Councillor.
I send emails. Folks, the problem is not the budget. Taxes were down. What we're asking people of Waterville to pay for the budget is actually down from last year. The problem, as you all pointed out, is the revow, which has shifted the burden onto the residential, especially the single-family homeowners. And when you consider this is all in light of in the past ten years, a drop of one-point-eight million in revenue sharing from the state, our friend Governor Lafferty. That translates into a mill rate increase of about three mils, one-point-eight less, one-point-eight million less a year. I hear a lot of people, I spoke to some good folks out at Fieldstone, about their incredible increase. And I understand that your new, recently new homes were given an initial evaluation based on nineteen ninety-three rate, which might explain why there's such an incredible increase in their home. I hear people are happy with their new valuation, they just don't want the mill rate. I talked to a city assessor. A home that's worth, let's say, a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, under twenty-four-point-five mils, which is what it's gonna be, would be down to about thirty-seven, seventy, thirty-six-seventy-five a year. Now, to drop that down a thousand dollars, which is kind of what we're looking at, get something from thirty-six down to twenty-five or twenty-six. The mill needs to be reduced to nineteen-point-five. The mill rate would have to get down to nineteen-point-five. That translates to about five million dollars in cuts. Unfortunately, unfortunately, if we're now gonna try to take it out of the budget, we're gonna wreck the budget. We don't have five million dollars to cut from the budget. There are contracts, there are insurance premiums, there are debt obligations. We can't get five million dollars. Think about the one-point-eight million dollars we're not getting from the state when later this month, we're gonna know, it's gonna come, it always comes, in late July, he announces a budget surplus with the state. Last year was like ninety million and it's probably gonna be over a hundred million this year. I propose that we agree to Don Dooford's suggestion that we delay implementation of the budget for at least a year to get everyone a chance to go through the appeal and see what we can do. Thank you.
Joe, I appreciate that. And you're certainly right about revenue sharing and it was a problem that Governor Lafferty had given us here in Waterville. And that's why I really wanted to focus on the expenditure side though. Because since he left the city, it costs us four million dollars more to run the city, about two million more for the schools, about two million more for the city. Though I know there are some things, like I can tell you on the city side, we have a three-hundred-thousand-dollar insurance liability that we have to pay. I can't tell you where the rest of it is. And that's what I'm asking that we find out. Because it is still no great problem, because I don't argue with my evaluation. I can tell you that, my evaluation is probably right on, if I can follow up on that. But at twenty-four and a half, what we found was that, no, nobody in this room, like we were told, is gonna think our mill rate's actually not that bad. We actually found out that valued at a hundred percent, we actually are, like everyone has said for years, one of the worst in the state. I'm just wondering why it costs the city almost sixteen million dollars to run the city when it cost thirteen million just a few years ago. And I'm not, yeah, I'm trying to say in a blameful way, but I think we should at least delve in and get those answers and find out what makes up all of that. And again, it's something for the school and I've talked to Eric and I know he's been busy. I know there's a lot of mandates that are out of school's control that come down from the state's federal government. But I wanna be able to look at each and every person in this room and say, here's what that is and here's what that costs and that's why it's costing two million dollars more than it is two years ago. But that's not the right way to say it, I appreciate that. And I hope the veto was not sustained, otherwise the very least we would have lost the evaluation. Councillor Mayhew?
Yeah, everybody on this council knows how I feel, very, very clear what I said. I don't, like councillor Donald says, I don't think we can cut five million dollars off the budget to be down to nineteen-point-five. I don't think, actually, that's what the city of Augusta, that's what the mill rate is, right around nineteen, with exploding infrastructure. Total different makeup of the municipality. Same thing with Winslow at fifteen. These are, these are, these are realities that are all around us that we all see and we all have to digest. What I'm asking for is like the mayor says, we need to investigate some of these things. We need to get answers because there hasn't been enough diligence, obviously, with some of these hidden things that are been going on. And I feel like we can still, maybe on a five-million-dollar, a five-million-dollar cut that would devastate central city services, we still feel like, we still have a significant finding of a tax cut that would make a difference. We have to go there and process, we have to make this a process. We have to get there step by step. Nobody said we could put the switch on in a dark room and make it happen overnight. But, Don, we have to be here for our constituents and our constituents have spoken loud and clear. And it makes me very angry to know the suffering of my constituents and I am powerless to do some things because I am tied by the votes that are happening sometimes. And I speak on behalf of... New people come first. That's what I have to say, new people come first.
Thank you.
And I would just like to say, I don't, I do wanna say that councillors who may disagree would probably care about you too. I think there's a debate about whether we're caring for you like I did in central services or not. So is there any other debate here? All right, I will open it up for public commentary. Again, if you can try and keep it within three to five minutes, we'll keep my own a little bit.
It might be a few minutes over, but I had emailed you to ask for...
Yes, you had said you had some extra things and I will honor that. If you guys have this opportunity to...
My name is Julian Payne and unfortunately John O'Donnell owns the area.
I'd be happy to keep time if you do ask for me to do that.
So I had a thirty percent increase from two thousand dollars to two-thousand-nine-hundred dollars per year. And that is after the fifteen-thousand subtraction and calculating it at twenty-four-point-five mill rate, which is a bit of a smokescreen, like a jewelry shop, a hundred percent off the jewelry. They're saying the mill rate's dropped and now my deductible is fifteen thousand, so I should be happy. That is still my rate after that factor. Central Maine Power, CMP and the healthcare organizations have to have hearings and the percentage increase is capped and blocked to protect the public. It would never be allowed to be a thirty percent increase in one year. I'm able to switch to another company if CMP does that to me. It's very difficult to up and move your house. Councillors voting for this budget are not representing their constituents. And it's interesting that the mayor vetoing it and the most outspoken councillor vetoing this are both also businessmen. Strange, right? And for people on the council that might be of a democratic persuasion, I understand why you would vote for this. I'm a Democrat myself. But the social impact on these families should be your concern. New families moving into those homes, families my age with kids in college and retired families. It affects everyone in the city. The reality is thirty-three, thirty-three percent of residents, middle class, are facing a hundred percent increase or higher. I'm not disputing the value of my home either. I think all the homes around here, Winslow, Fairfield, are probably valued properly. It is the mill rate that is the problem. Basic economics. Clinton, fifteen mill rate, Winslow, fifteen-point-eight, and Fairfield is twenty-one-point-seven. We should not have a mill rate of nineteen, but we should not have a mill rate higher than our highest competitor of twenty-one-point-seven. While I know you need money, it will cripple your future money. It cannot be higher. It's a dangerous threshold, it's myopic and it's dangerous. And to me, it means the city is bankrupt. You cannot spend more than twenty-one-point-seven mill rate. You have to take the twenty-one-point-seven and work backwards. You have no right to spend any more than that. The future growth of the city will be in jeopardy. The city will shrink, there will be an exodus of residents. There will be no one left to use these services we have overpaid for. With the mills closing and the jobs moving out, the only thing we have left to market is the properties. Our streets look like mouths full of cavities, missing teeth, empty, but these are the homes. The downtown revitalization will be in jeopardy due to residents not moving in and a lack of gravy money to spend in this new facility. Residents will not be spending in restaurants and shops downtown with that kind of increase. If I was Colby, I would not invest in the downtown knowing this. My taxes have gone up a thousand dollars. For every hundred dollars you borrow, every thousand, oh, sorry, every ten thousand dollars you borrow with a mortgage translates to a hundred dollars a month payment. I will have to knock ten thousand dollars off my property value in order to sell this house now. You've effectively devalued a third of the city's properties. You will also put people off making any future renovations, which will affect businesses, hardware shops, and construction. No one will put money into our homes. How to make cuts, hard to know. Library, the one-way system, pay freeze on all city employees, larger portion of the healthcare absorbed by them, as does the private sector. The average class size in America is twenty-six-point-eight children, Waterville is around seventeen to eighteen. My daughter did a bridge program for the last two years. They had eight kids in the class, so we were paying those teachers to teach eight kids. The opera house should fall under the private sector. They should stop, stop, stop spending. You borrowed until you're bankrupt. We have the best fire station in the state, the best police station in the state, and we have the fifth highest mill rate. People should look up the word austerity. If any borrowing should have been done by anyone in this city, it should have been borrowing to have reduced the mill rates lower than any other surrounding town. People would have flooded in. You need to be the lowest mill rate. If a CEO of a company had lost thirty percent... If a CEO of a company had lost 30% of my investments, or any shareholders, or a football manager was on a losing streak, they would be replaced. I think any vote held here today should be for the competency of the town manager. And I also think two councillors should remove themselves from the debate due to conflict of interest. It is not that I don't believe they're upstanding citizens and are voting in the correct way, but it should remove any shadow of a doubt. One councillor has a spouse who works for the school system, and one councillor has a relationship, I'm told, with Parks and Recreation. They should not be allowed to vote on this budget. That is what I have to say. And I've come up with a new slogan for Waterville. It says Waterville. Water, standing, spend our money like water, and will pay for it with our wills. Thank you.
My name is Brad Schrod, I live on Third Street. And I want to thank the city council and the mayor for their contribution to the residents of this town and their hard work. My speech is only maybe a couple of minutes, but I just want to add one thing at the beginning of it. And that is regarding the issue of the large area that is nonprofit. Some of that can be reduced by creating a fire district and a street maintenance district and charging fees for toll services. And that is a legal thing to do. Lewis and Does it for Ring Water Collection. It is not a tax. It is passed quirk-muster. If you do it, if you want to do that. In 2010, the people elected Paula Page as governor on the promises of lower taxes. Tragically, in 2011, he pushed through a massive tax cut. How many of you here noticed a drop in your taxes? Anybody see a drop in your income taxes?
I did.
Not many of you noticed, because primarily it was a gift to the wealthiest mayors. While the average person may have had a tax deduction of about $100, the wealthiest, those who benefited the most from our society, so on average, have approximately $3,000 in tax cuts. Yes, there are angry people here. They get $1,000 property tax increase, while the wealthiest have received $3,000 tax cuts for the past five years. The result is that roughly $200 million per year have been lost to our state government revenue and to our economy. How does that work? No one ever sees the tax rate coming in a single payment, and then decides they're going to invest it in the main economy. What happens is the working poor and the middle class see a tiny increase in their paycheck, and they immediately spend it. In contrast, wealthier people, and this is a good practice, maintain a minimum balance in their checking accounts, anywhere from $10,000 to $50,000. And when they see an extra several thousand dollars in their account, they don't spend it in vain on the economy because their normal living expenses are already paid for. It goes to a college fund, to their grandchildren, their portfolio, they oversee vacation, or whatever. If the 2011 tax gifts were intended to stimulate main economy, they were given to the wrong people. The next several years, a period of budget chaos, state revenues fell dramatically, which resulted in the state dollars that go directly into our economy, and the resulting multiplier effect, were lost. Revenue sharing was drastically cut. The municipalities started cutting out programs, laying out people that contributed to the local economy, and that multiplier effect also. And they started drawing down their reserves. Our state's economy has been lagging ever since, and dependent upon the national economy for any growth. By the time the 2014 election season came, predictions and warnings were made that property taxes would need to be raised to keep our towns functioning. Streets need to be maintained, trash collected, schools operated, buildings inspected, fire departments funded, traffic accidents attended to, parks maintained, homeless people helped, and a myriad of other services funded. The warnings were there, and those of you whose only effort to defeat Paula Page was to vote for someone else, and those of you who are his supporters and cheerleaders, re-elected Paula Page, and thereby, you voted for higher property taxes. So now here we are, getting the chaos you voted for. Therefore, I suggest... I better keep my glasses on. Therefore, I do suggest that you examine the budget closely, delay the increase like was suggested, and then do our economy, our towns, and our society a favor by getting to work reversing the 2011 gifts to those who have benefited the most from the investments of previous generations. The decimation of state government and municipalities is doing great harm to our society. The demand that every budget action must include a spending cut or a tax deduction in the rate is more than just being penny-wise in town foolish, and is both irresponsible and destructive. Be courageous and override the mayor's feelings.
Anybody else in the audience?
Come on to the floor. It really thinks to be a service center city. Because if you were in Augusta, you have the marketplace, you have a lot of tax revenue. You don't have that here in Waterville. Waterville is the service center. You go from Benton, Fairfield, Winslow, come to this city. So what do we have to do? We have to make sure we have protection to them. So we have FTEs and police departments. We have to make sure that we have our firefighters there, rescue. That's the reality. That's not an only for change. Now, having said that, I would encourage the council, take a look at the budget again. Because when you go over it the first time, the second time, the third time, and then when you come to a vote, you feel kind of comfortable about it, but maybe there's something that you can take another look at. And I would encourage you to do that, as well as the school part. Also, what we take a look at is what you have under unrestricted assets. And those are funds that you have on your balance sheet, from savings that you've had in the past. Take a look at those numbers as well. You've used them in the past, in the city of Waterville and council, to offset the tax increases. Take a look at that again. Take a look at the school side unrestricted assets, earnings there. And look at what you feel comfortable with. Again, the budget is not a really bad budget, as far as you're cutting it down. The issue is the revaluation risks. And until you get some control there, you're going to have problems, and you're going to have really unhappy people in the future.
Paul Bearwood, which also is known as the South End. On Friday, I went to see City Manager Mike Roy. And I know I'm French. And I asked him, I says, Mike, I have a problem. He says, what's that? I said, I live in the South End, and my property went from $48,000 valuation down to $31,000. So I'm going to pay less tax on my, most of you here tonight. Now, I don't call the fire department rescue unit every time I get a little splinter in my finger. I believe I'm an honest citizen, so the police aren't there every night. But I do use the roads. My grandson goes to school. And I feel, as a citizen of Waterville, that I want to pay my fair share. My eye goes out to all of you that have tax increases. But on the other end, when they did the rebal, they never came inside my house. I don't know if it's because we live in the South End, where everybody forgets, or it's a bad neighborhood. Yep, you have problems. But there's some nice houses down there too, and people take care of their property. I know I do. I mow my lawn every week. So I will pay my dues to the city to help them out. But I ask the council and the mayor, on behalf of the citizens of Waterville, to think about it for a year and postpone, and let's get the mill rate down to everyone. Thank you.
On that, Norton Warburg. This is a great opportunity, right here. Wow. Let's go back to the $10,000 jobs that were lost. Realistically speaking, well, let's also look at the school. Mr. Haley is here. When my son graduated in 88, we were Class A, and we were winning everything. I'm sorry, something has changed. Well, for one thing, what are we, Class what now? C? C? That means there are a whole lot less kids. Well, I know that, but I'm making a point. Everybody has to be realistic. I don't, you know, I don't, I know that there are people that work for the city, fire, school, police. Hey, I pray for them daily for their safety, especially in these times. But the reality of it is, and I think we all have to look at everything. And when I was in business, for 25 years, 362 days downtown, who's coming? I had to make adjustments. Business changed, you know, you have to make adjustments. Everybody does. You can't just say, well, yeah, you know, my contract says this, the insurance is, you know. It's got to be realistic. It's tough. It's tough on all of us. And so I would just like to say, let's take a hard look at what we can do, and let's have all of the departments and see with the mill rate capped, everybody gets to make the decision. And the budget's set. The amount of decrease is the same for everybody. There's no, you know, well, we have to let this department, because they're this or that. Everybody should have to make the same decisions based on what's available to spend. So I say again, reduce and pay off the city's indebtedness. You know, there is a book that says, do not, you know, be a borrower. And that's the way I live my life, and I think the city could afford to do the same. But thank you all for being here. I really appreciate it. Yeah, thank you. Good evening. Hello, Mayor Rizro. I want to thank you for your veto. The little guys really appreciate that. As homeowners and taxpayers, are we being unreasonable to expect the city to keep their promise of a $20 mill rate made by the council chair two years ago, when this council agreed to the revaluation? Are we being unreasonable to expect the city to keep its promise of no new tax increases after we voted to keep P A Y T? Is a 20% or greater tax increase combined with plummeting home values a fair and just treatment of those you represent? If you travel your wars, you will note many residents are on low and fixed incomes. Many residents also belong to the struggling and shrinking middle class, and thus why I'm here. Who on the council speaks for them? Who believes that Waterville residents should experience plummeting home values, all due to fewer people willing to move to Waterville as a result of being one of the highest taxed cities in Maine, with a trajectory of becoming the highest? Who here believes that low and fixed income residents should cut their food budget, prescriptions, utilities, eliminate home maintenance, or be forced to sell their homes? Also, you people on the council can avoid making the tougher budgeting decisions that are necessary and that we make every day in our household budgets. All councillors who agree to this current budget are ignoring the will and plight of the struggling residents on low and fixed incomes. It's time for the city to begin living within our means, which means accepting our demographics. The mills have closed. Our demographics have changed. And recognizing that state funds are likely to decrease, not increase. I have an article dated January 5, 2011. It was Paula Page's last night as mayor of Waterville. And I told Paula Page, I really urge the citizens of Waterville not to go crazy on spending in the next couple of years. I say this because not only is I wise, but I say this, our federal government is in dire, dire debt. Our state government is in dire debt. The governor-elect said he and others have been working the past couple of weeks to develop a supplemental budget, and there is no way to make it work without major cuts. This council was warned. Paula Page said that night, there are deficits everywhere, red ink everywhere. If you are not cautious, you will be facing red ink in the city of Waterville. This council was warned. Between 2011 and 2014, this council agreed, and I'm not saying all councillors, but some of you are not here. $1.5 million towards the Waterville library, $500,000 towards the Opera House. Why weren't those funds privately gone through the private sector? $3.4 million on the police station, and we all support them, we do great work. $350,000 fire department, $585,000 airport, and this $305,000 property valuation? That was on borrowed money. Two of the councillors that are sitting here tonight voted for this revaluation, and now they want to put it off till next year. Guess what? They are both up for reelection in the fall. Let's hold them accountable. If this revaluation is put off, we have three councillors up for reelection next year. You know who you are. You will be dealing with this mess next year. It's time to fix it now. You need to cut the budget. You need to go back, support the mayor's veto. We're asking you to go back to the table and make the tougher budgeting decisions that reflect the will of the people, our new climate of decreased state funds, and our shrinking failure budgets. We all want to support local businesses. We support the revitalization of downtown Waterville. But how are we going to support these businesses when our property tax bill has grown 20% or greater across the city? Think about this. Which one of you councillors is prepared to deliver fines, interest payments, property needs, or foreclosures on residents who cannot afford these tax increases? If further cuts are not made, then you are responsible for these actions, because the buck stops with you. Some councillors are up for reelection this fall, some next year. If you support this budget, are you prepared to meet the wrath of your constituents as you run for reelection? Are you prepared to tell your constituents that you voted for a budget that raised their taxes 20% or greater? This is what we are talking about. This is a serious issue. We have a lot of struggling families that are really going to be hurt by this budget. Please, go back to the table and work on a budget that the residents can afford and one that you can be proud of. Thank you.
Come back. My name is Steve O'Quinn. I guess I'd like to correct some broad generalizations. First of all, the comparison of the tax rate here in Winslow, in Fairfield, in Oakland, there is no comparison. For people who are saying rent-type business, well, then I say, "Have the state give us the authority and power to tax every entity in this town." No town around us has thirty percent of its base except... But that's not... I mean, there's a larger point here too, and the revenue sharing issue is huge. And it certainly was huge for Paula Page. I was on the council, and Paula Page was mayor. And we were able to cut taxes excessively year after year, and why was that? It was because the state revenue sharing monies increased because that was a law, a deal between the municipalities and the state. If the municipalities would give up the business inventory tax, then the state would return a certain percentage of tax to the municipalities. That was a deal. That was a deal. And the back that got turned on that deal is in Augusta. You shouldn't be like that, I mean, because you know, I mean, it's easy to come here, or difficult, and to be concerned about this and even to applaud. The fact is that everyone who's disconcerted about this should let our chief executive know that what he did on his way out the door is cut our throats.
Hello, my name is Matt Loppenon. I live in Ward Two. I like most of these people here today who are gonna have a catastrophic tax increase if this thing goes through. And as I've been thinking about it, it occurred to me that it's not just this year that this is gonna hit us in the face. We're gonna get it again next year with no guarantee that they won't raise the taxes on top of what they are already doing. I mean, this isn't the magic bullet. This is just a whopper of an excuse to get a bunch of money and then hit us again and again and again. I mean, think about it. My taxes probably go up seven or eight hundred dollars in ten years. That's eight thousand dollars. I mean, families can't handle it. I mean, I'm not, you know, I'm not destitute or anything like that. I could pay it, I have to. But that means something else doesn't get done. I mean, this is egregious. This real has to be rolled back. And what I would recommend, but from one place to start, is to just dump this reevaluation. Just call it a loser and move on. And go back to what we had, rework the budget. And if you absolutely have to have a tax increase, adjust the mill rate. But this reevaluation is pounding me up, since you've got it. Thank you.
Yes, you can to me.
Mike, or Chuck, I have a couple of questions, just gonna keep coming up. Are we legally able to put off this reevaluation that's been asked?
Not tonight, we can't do it tonight.
Well, I don't even, I don't even know if that's really advised. I don't know if that's something that Bill Lee can answer for me, but...
Well, I've already talked to Bill about that. Council certainly has the authority to delay the implementation of the rebound. There's no item on the agenda tonight invoked to do that tonight. You can certainly do that at a future meeting, delay.
And what would happen if something like that loaded the state plan? Because a lot of property owners have decreased in taxes.
Right, that remains the uncertainty. With delay is for... Those people are gonna have decreases, and let's face it, there's many that have decreases as there are increases.
That was residential, there's as many residents with decreases?
I'm speaking overall, commercial and residential. Well, put it another way, with the rebound contrary to what Mr. Hammond said, the amounts the city's raising is no more than we would if we hadn't had a rebound. It's just being redistributed, so to your question...
Right, and then I just wanna make sure that I'm honest, because it's been a critical turn. We're not getting any more money from the taxes. I think the last gentleman just said, "We're raising, we're getting more money from taxes, and then we're raising the mill rate." We're actually, this budget is decreasing the mill rate. And basically what's happened to the property taxes is it's been shifted. So is that correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
But I just wanna make sure that it's understood that we're not getting, if you're paying more property taxes now because of this reevaluation, that is not an increase in our budget of revenue. We're not getting a revenue increase at all. These are two separate items, and I know they seem really blended, but it's not... We are not getting extra revenue from your property taxes.
We're actually getting less, we should know that.
We're actually getting less.
Which is why, to me, I find it so... Because to me, that is why I kind of look at the budget and look at the history of the budget and really want to get back to figure out where the millions increases came over the last couple of years in the budget. Because, you're right, we're not getting more money. But that doesn't make it any less societal detriment. Because right now, let's face it, Waterville just happens to have, and Waterville people have jobs. That's... And they're just gonna shift that burden more and more, and I just worry.
They, and why are they doing that? I mean, what caused the shift?
For rebound.
Why did that happen?
Because we have a lot of commercial buildings.
Why isn't the commercial buildings paying more?
Paul, I think you're... We're talking about the shift in property values and why that happened.
And why do we have to have reevaluation at this time? Because it's state law, it's state law, right, Bill?
I'll defer to Paul as the timing of the revaluation, but Mike just asked me to address a question the council, which he had raised, regarding the possibility, which would have to be done in a separate evening, of delaying or nullifying the revaluation. And the question should then be, what happens if in fact you do that? The net effect of that would be to cost the city probably hundreds of thousands of dollars. Because all of the people whose property taxes have gone down under this valuation will step forward and request an abatement of their taxes. The property is supposed to be valued according to its just value. Just value is fair market value. We have spent three hundred thousand dollars hiring an expert witness for anyone who wishes to say their taxation rate or their taxable value should be reduced. They will request an abatement, and their Exhibit A will be the reval that was just done. And they will win that case. They will win every single one of those cases. So please don't think that you can decide you're going to delay the implementation of this revaluation or just somehow ignore it. Because the taxpayers who then would feel adversely affected by it are not going to ignore it. Why should they? The city just paid three hundred thousand dollars to prove that their property is worth considerably less than they are being taxed. They will step forward, as they have a legal right to do, and request abatements. So you all better keep that in mind. What the actual dollar, potential dollar loss would be, I would defer to our assessor, and he may not be able to give that type of number, but I would suspect that if everybody stepped up, there would probably be hundreds of thousands of dollars. You just need to know that.
And because we didn't do this reval earlier, then the folks whose property values went down have technically been overpaying.
That, according to the formula, the way it is created. And that is correct. The last time the city did revaluation, I don't think the changes in the residential values was quite as dramatic, but it was...
The mill rate dropped, less quarters.
Yeah, and there were people very understandably shocked, just as people are here tonight. But I just want to make sure you, as councilors, understand that you might say, "Well, we're just gonna ignore this reval." That doesn't mean that the taxpayers who would otherwise be receiving a reduction in their tax bill, business owners, some residential owners, are just gonna stay silent, they're not going to.
And by state law, how often will they have to do revaluations?
I'm gonna defer to Paul on that one, and then if he wants to address that, I can. Because I'm not gonna, I don't wanna say off the top of my head.
There is no state law that mandates any timing. The state law says if your assessment ratio is less than eighty percent and your quality rating, which is the coefficient of dispersion, where the assessments fall in the bell curve, is greater than twenty, you're mandated to have a reval.
So when were we on those two points?
Our quality rating almost got to twenty, and our assessment ratio was eighty-six percent. Before it went from to eighty-six percent, it had gone down to seventy-nine.
Oh, it sort of was growing.
At one time, yeah, just a few years ago.
And you, do you know off the top of your head the last time there was a reval, what the mill rate was, and then after the revaluation, what it dropped to?
It was thirty dollars. And it dropped to, I think, twenty dollars and seventy cents, I think.
So this really is a small drop, it's a considerably smaller drop in the mill rate.
Yes, but the last time you went from, you know, it was in nineteen ninety-two. I think a prior reval was in nineteen sixty-eight. Had been a long, long time, twenty-four years. And the city valuation went from three hundred and fifty billion to six hundred billion. This time, you're going from six fifty to seven fifty. So the actual valuation growth has been smaller than it was on the last one.
Realistically, the only way to really... This really is a mill rate issue, that's based on...
I know. Yeah, but the mill rate is factored from the overall budget divided by the overall assessment. And then that's what the mill rate equals. It doesn't work the other way around. You don't go after the dollar based on your assessment. You create a budget, you find out what your total assessments are, divide one to the other, and that equals your mill rate. And that gives you the amount of rates, which equals your budget.
Paul, was I correct when I suggested we probably make us costs of five million cuts to get down to nineteen point five more rate?
That's a true statement, yes.
And that would essentially drop a thousand dollars of a...
Thirty-five hundred, all tax bill would go to twenty-five hundred roughly, yeah.
Five million dollars.
Five million dollars in tax, yes.
Can I respond to the council's...
Yes, actually, can I allow someone to focus on the budget?
Thank you, Paul, sir.
He's a smart guy.
He is, he's a smart guy.
I'm not that smart, but I have my property taxes, but I don't really get it, you know? I don't even know how much, I mean, I gotta find out what I'm gonna pay him. You know, I'll pay my taxes, but I won't be late, you know? I think for me, it really comes down to like what Paul just said. That was the most succinct piece of information, like, wow. I like you, oh, you're really a smart guy. Really, it's just like, wow, it's just all in the package. Like, the city of Waterville is just spending too much money. And I gotta say, you know, I mean, I think, I mean, am I wrong? I got stuff in my house I can't afford. You know, I have leather seats in my car, I really can't afford that. But she wanted it, so we got it. But who doesn't do that? Who doesn't have stuff that you really can't afford, but you want? You know? I think that. The new police station, we need a police station, it's gotta be functional. You know, they have to be great point two million, I'm not a cop, I don't know. But maybe there was some way we could have made it cheaper. I'm sure people tried. But it just, at the end of the day, it seems very simple. You can't get everything you want. I mean, it's just that simple. I can, I can trash bag my house. You know, who hasn't done this? You go to the kitchen, you got some trash, you run for the trash bag, and you're like, you're shopping, you're shopping. It just, you know, I'm lazy, geez, I'm the laziest person in the room. One more thing in that trash bag. I don't wanna go get another trash bag, I don't wanna pull that out, and stuff's dripping, we're going outside with this. But sometimes you just gotta go get your trash bag. It sucks, but you gotta go get it. You just gotta not spend money if you don't have it. I know a lot of you guys in the city that work hard. I worked for a city for nine years, so I can say this. I spent money. When I worked for a city for nine years, I spent, I spent five hundred thousand dollars in about six weeks. I did, I'm the money. I was filled to heart, some people who know me, I did. I was blown through money like crazy. Man, you do a great job for the city, I've been on trails, my kids go on trails, they go skiing, or you know, go to the pool, the pool lot. That, when you're at the pool, or you're skiing, or you're on the trail down by the water, or you know, whatever you do, you knock down the water front over here. You enjoy it, and you appreciate the work that these people do. They work hard for their money, I mean, it's hard work. I don't know any slackers here. But at the end of the day, it's just simple math. If you don't have it, you can't spend it. It's just that simple. I mean, I don't wanna see math, or anyone who do a lot of the job, God forbid. But when the city of Augusta nine years ago faced that recession when you evolved it, I got, it was thirteen years later, you got paid off. I would wanna, holy shit, what are you gonna do? I'm not a raw chainsaw, so picked up a chainsaw, and I cast in my retirement, and I went and bought a chainsaw and a pickup truck. You know, and people here know me, that's what I did, I had a pickup truck and a chainsaw. You know, and you guys, a lot of you saw that big pile of wood in front of our rooms? It was an ugly nasty pile of wood. And I think smiley faces on it. Because people were complaining, and they were saying...
Why, were they complaining about it?
Yeah, they were complaining. I'm not a super smart guy, I'm really not. But you know what I did? I stacked up my wood, you guys remember this? All in these round things, and then painted smiley faces on it. Remember that? And I did that so that people had to complain about the wall for smiles. That guy with the smiley face. You just gotta be smart, and somebody outside the box. Could we do, let me say one thing. Could we do a one-day or a three-day layoff for non-essential personnel every six months? Everybody gets laid off, not paid. How much would we save if we laid off for three days every non-essential person twice a year? I'm guessing four hundred thousand dollars? I don't know, you know? Just at the end. You come to my house, you know, in my theater, and you'll have fun while you're there. And... Outside the box.
And that's what I remind people, like, you know, if we didn't get here overnight, it's gonna take us a long time. And this council is here, actually has been working, I would say, has been working really hard, engaging with our community partners to create that revitalization. They brought in two hundred jobs, and we're still working to do that. Sorry, I don't wanna fool ourselves as easy answers, but I do know that expenses have increased, and we can go back and...
Nick Champagne, word five. First off, I want to thank Eastern Valley for sitting up here and listening to us. I know it's very hard. I know you spent a lot of, a lot of time on the budget. This is a very tough time. I really, I really do respect that. Everyone else has already echoed my sentiments before. I won't waste your time any further. The one thing I haven't heard yet is, can we contest this revaluation? Who says, who says that this, this company presented this accurately? And I say that because as an engineer, we typically have third parties come review our, our work on a regular basis. And perhaps that's a question for Paul, or anybody else in the meeting.
I can call the local... I say that just because of my own, my own personal assessment. I will say this. My property value went up by six hundred dollars. If that will make actual property value up thirty thousand dollars. Most of that was due with my building. My actual land value went down. My building value went up, and I thought, well, if I took my key on Collect Street and I moved it elsewhere in the city, then it would be the same value. But that's not the case with mine. That's, I have a meeting tomorrow with me, with the committee, but that's one question that I have.
Hello?
We have Paul coming on to answer the question.
The answer to Mr. Champagne's question is, main revenue service oversees our department here in and year out. There's annual audits of assessments, assessment ratio studies done and validated by this department of main revenue.
So what is the process, Paul? If, for instance, the assessment company denies your request to review your assessment, is there a further appeal to your office?
Oh, most definitely. At the, at what, the process right now is if you feel your assessment is inappropriate or inaccurate, appeal to the company. They'll make adjustments if there's necessary. If, and you're unsatisfied at that time, when the tax bills come out, you're always going to appeal to the local assessor. If that's denied, then the local board of assessment reviews that can be appealed to. If that was denied, you could further appeal to the state board of property tax review in some cases, and then in some other cases, it would be directly to the Supreme Court. So the process is never over. It's never over.
Hello, my name is Paul Lewis here. A lot of familiar faces here. A lot of familiar faces in the audience. I know a lot of their houses. And, and, for the city of Waterville, I was also an employee here for five years. We were kind of open for nine years before that, but pretty much the rest of that time, my wife and I have been self-employed in various businesses at one time or another. There have been many times in my life when we've had to just pick ourselves up and start over because we had spent more than what we were taking in. And it meant some cuts in our lifestyle, but we formed a plan. And when we explained that plan to people we owed money to, and worked it out, we worked it out. Now, the problem here is not a valuation problem. I think that the houses that we're building, in Waterville, by the way, I don't know of any other builders that build, who kill in Waterville, but we're one of them. And it has been my hope to build fifty more homes in Waterville. But I think they've been assessed correctly. I wouldn't want to sell my house for much less than what it's been assessed for. But I know I wouldn't be able to sell it for that much because of the high tax bill. My taxes went up twenty-eight hundred dollars this year, okay? It's a nice home. We build quality homes. Now, a lot of our homes were in both Oakland prior. We had a subdivision that incorporated into both municipalities, Oakland and Waterville. I gotta tell you, many of my Waterville customers knew five, six, ten years ago that their taxes would be six, seven, eight hundred dollars more than Waterville than in Oakland. At that time, to get trash picked up, there were some other benefits, and we built a lot of houses in Waterville. I can tell you, in the last two weeks, we have lost resales from people who sincerely wanted to move to Waterville, but it was the tax rate that scared them off. And so, here we are, okay? We have a spending problem. If we stop spending, can we afford to wait long enough for new businesses and taxpayers to begin to generate more money here? I don't think that's going to happen quickly enough. Certainly, new housing will not be here. Certainly, businesses that can locate other municipalities that have good highway access and lower taxes will probably do so. So I would suggest that the city, the council, look at putting its house in order by looking at the budget, and I would propose a ten percent tax cut across the board for a generated mill rate of nineteen dollars per thousand. That would make it more compatible with suburban communities, and it won't be painless. But if we start the process now, I think we'll come out with a stronger place. Waterville is a great community, okay? I don't go to these other towns to shop generally. Only if it's not available in Waterville, do I leave Waterville. I like the fact it has some of these attractions. And, you know, the service center part of it. I just wonder, does the reval company miss that? In other words, if these businesses are doing slightly more business in Waterville because of its service center makeup, really, is their valuation less, but it should be a little bit more? That's all I have to say.
Thank you for reminding us that, you know, Waterville is an incredible place, but it's all of you and all, all of the people who are here tonight and who are not here tonight, and all people in this council, who make up Waterville. And, and we want to make sure that we stay here, we afford to live here, and we're all good.
Oh, Julie, I'm only speaking again just to respond to the councilors. A third of the houses have gone down. Percentage has decreased, and the monthly payment that has decreased is not the same relationship to the percentage of the houses that have gone up in value. That is the concern. A house that maybe was forty thousand dollars is now worth thirty-five. They might be looking at a hundred dollars a year. That, the concern is the inflation amount of a hundred, two hundred percent to residents. That kind of inflation amount was akin to the same amount in Germany before the Second World War with the Weimar Republic. It hasn't been seen again in this country by any private entity. Even the healthcare going up a hundred percent over the time was over ten years. Now, if I have a business downtown and I'm struggling, my neighbor's selling a banana for five dollars, I'm going to sell my banana for seven dollars. This is what we're doing. And I agree with everyone who's spoken that says the assessment value of the house is correct. I cannot dispute the value of my house, although it won't be that value next year. But at present, it is that value. It's the mill rates. Everyone wants their money. You want your money? These hardworking gentlemen want their money. But the moment, as I said, you put your mill rates higher than the next town, it's a death knell. There's no reason for anyone to come to Waterville. It's a service town. I can drive five minutes from Fairfield. The first thing people do when they look at property online is what's the tax rate? My tax rate now is fifty percent of what my mortgage was when I had mortgage payments. So it's called priming the pump. Nineteen is probably unrealistic. The mill rate of twenty-one point seven in Fairfield's rate is still an increase of five hundred dollars a year for me. I couldn't argue it, though, because it's competitive. It's what our nearest neighbor is doing. And to me, that's the whole issue. And anyone who votes on a mill rate higher than twenty-one point seven doesn't understand economics, or really wants their money quick, hard, and fast, and next year, they will be in an even worse boat, boat, at this council meeting. Because probably half the people here won't even be in this town to come to the meeting. It's just economics one oh one. Competition. Bring people in. Build the homes. Get builders coming. You won't sell. You've virtually guaranteed a zero growth for this city by voting. So you want your money, but you're getting it in the wrong place. Thank you.
Any other discussion from the audience? Any other discussion on the council? Okay, this is just going to be a simple vote then. And just to clear a yes, just to vote to override the veto, a no, the same to veto, and we can go back to the table. Right, all of those in favor of overriding veto? Abol? You're stuck with your taxes, folks, I'm sorry. I sure did. I did, yeah.
We are live on TV. Well, not live right now, but I can't edit that out.
Please don't edit that out.
Just keeping everyone aware.
So Nick, order one, twenty, twelve, and six.
Oh, they're going to rename streets.
My mayor, members of the council, the owners of Hathaway would like you to postpone the line of work until August second meeting.
Move to August second.
In order to provide court acceptance of a new city street, here by order of the city council, the city of Waterville, I can add this office will follow, that a new street connecting the historic Upper Western Avenue to Chase Avenue, the exact name of the city street tends to be named Marcy Avenue. The new right of way is defined by the attached right of way plan and reported in the Quebec County Red Street, the five seventeen, eight three oh seven. With the following order, one twenty-six, address this additional renaming issue related to this.
Councilor Soul, Councilor White, Councilor Winslow, Councilor Mayor, Councilor Donald, Councilor Touche, Councilor Pupon?
Yes.
Okay, order one twenty-six, two oh one six.
Read back that along, Mike?
Second.
All favorites?
I order providing court to remain portion of the Western Avenue.
Move to the dot?
Second.
Discussion? This is the one for Lee Way. I don't know if there's somebody here that actually, you want to go up to the hearing? Tell us where you live.
Chris Chapput, and I actually, my address is one thirty-six First Street Way, but my driveway is off of the new proposed road, or the new road that has come from the construction. I noticed in the agenda of the name, when I talked to the mayor after the last meeting about the name, it's not that I have anything against you, though. But the name Lee Way, for one, is it one word or is it two? And secondly, it's a nautical term for off course. So just, as far as, so just as far as street names are concerned, you know, doing some research, obviously, my property is in what used to be the D, and was the original content of the Earthline Sisters, who built Marcy. And so looking at some of the other streets around the area, we have some more that are somewhat reference their, their history. So I just, I've got a list of names that myself and some of our neighbors would prefer over Lee Way. I don't know if I, if any one of them would be preferred over the other, but it was just my understanding that there was no other proposed idea other than Lee Way. So St. Benedict Court or Place, first of all, Way would imply that you can drive through it to somewhere else. You can't, it's dead ends, cold sack. So Place or Court would be more appropriate, just the fact that it is a dead end street. But St. Benedict Court, Marcy Court or Place. Earthline Sisters is actually a race that Earthline Sisters refer to as the Angeline's. So Angeline's Place or Court. And then from Mount Marcy Academy, there are Montoservan, Serbian Place or Court would also be something that would be appropriate, where, you know, school did a lot of that property before, for that area before, you know, Serbian had it.
Might that make some sense at your tables? Give this individual a chance?
We have to go to the nine-eleventh street addressing committee and make sure that any of the names you suggested are not in conflict with existing names. Matter of fact, Lee Way was kind of was in question just a few days ago because Winslow has a Lee Street. Possible disapp, could get confused between the two. So we don't have any objections. I know Bill doesn't have any objections to changing it. Let's just find a name that's kind of not conflict, so.
How much time do you need to do it for?
Next meeting.
Next meeting? Next name? What's the table? Sorry, sorry, I'm sorry, boy.
Lee Way was not my idea.
Actually, you asked us not to do it when you did it.
That is correct. I mean, how about No Name Lane? Well, think about it. Because they must have local support. And I understand, I understand to me, and after you too, because of how long you've been here, but I already know you need to give your full name to it. So William Lee York would make more sense than everybody else. Uh, would you, my wonder? Yes, please.
I'd like the off course.
So, can we get the next name?
Move to adopt.
Move to adopt.
Order one twenty-seven to oh one six.
An order providing for acceptance and appropriation of two thousand sixteen Burn Justice Assistance Grant.
Move to adopt.
Seven.
Okay, in this session. All okay?
Uh, Volcoho?
Volcoho.
Counselor Sol?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Counselor Mayeux?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Dupont?
Yes.
Seven favor and zero votes.
Order one thirty-nine to oh one six.
Move read by title only.
Second.
All favorites?
An order is provided for amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Move to adopt.
Second.
In session. Volcoho.
Counselor Sol?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Counselor Mayeux?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Dupont?
Yes.
For seven favor and zero votes.
Order one thirty-nine to oh one six.
Move read by title only.
Second.
All favorites?
An order providing for approval of natural gas, if necessary.
Move to adopt.
Okay. In session.
As you wanted to go. Go ahead, Mike.
Yes, we'd like to propose an amendment based on the counselor, um, the last being which made a lot of sense in that the easement that we were asked to approve would have been for anything. And I think John O'Donnell made a very good point that if they're asking for an easement for natural gas, let's limit it to natural gas. If you open up the easement on page three, you see in yellow that they have added or changed the language, which I think limits it for natural gas purposes. So, you have an easement for engine here to provide natural gas. If at some time they stop, they just can't take that easement and sell it to another utility for other purposes.
It doesn't actually require amendment to the order for further tax agreement?
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Okay. Move to Volcoho.
Counselor Sol?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Counselor Mayeux?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Dupont?
Yes.
For seven favor and zero votes.
Order one thirty-two oh one six.
Move read by title only.
Second.
All favorites?
An order providing for approval of four minutes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any questions?
Counselor Sol?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Counselor Mayeux?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Dupont?
Yes.
For seven favor and zero votes.
Order one thirty-one to oh one six.
Move read by title only.
Second.
All favorites?
An order providing for acceptance of gift of residential property.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any questions? Volcoho.
Counselor Sol?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Dupont?
Yes.
Counselor Mayeux?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Dupont?
Yes.
For seven favor and zero votes.
Order one thirty-three to oh one six.
Move read by title only.
Second.
All favorites?
An order is providing for adoption of ordinance regulating marijuana facilities.
Move to adopt.
Any questions? Volcoho.
Counselor Sol?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Counselor Mayeux?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Dupont?
Yes.
For seven favor and zero votes.
Order one thirty-three to oh one six.
Move read by title only.
Second.
All favorites?
An order is providing for repeal of ordinance forty-two dash two thousand sixteen regulating marijuana facilities.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any questions?
Counselor Sol?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Winslow?
Yes.
Counselor Mayeux?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Dupont?
Yes.
For seven favor and zero votes.
All right, on due business, resolution one thirty-six to oh one six.
A resolution providing for extension of outdoor dining to Conne Street. It resolved by the City Council of the City of Warrnambool acting as municipal officers as follows, that permission granted by the Commissioner for Extension of Outdoor Dining to the corner of Conne Street is one of the exact map. It is understood that this approval is limited to those four dates identified as the Warrnambool Rocks Summer Concert Series hanging on West Square, and that this approval will only be valid for both hours before Conne Street is closed for the new year.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any questions?
So this doesn't involve any permanent addition to the, you know, the usual?
No, it's a temporary extension into Conne Street that Elmetal can explain a little further. The council, a number of years ago, gave the city clerk authority to issue permits for sidewalk dining. This was a little different where it came into the street, so we thought we'd at least come to you first and let you know that. Was certainly wholly supportive of this because, and the concerts start next week, but I'll let you take it.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Bill Mitchell, um, thanks. Most of you, you know me, I have a business in downtown, real estate downtown. Recently, partnered with the owners of Last Unicorn, opening the Proper Pig on Conne Street. Have been very involved with the concert series, and it just is coincidental that my new restaurant is on Conne Street, adjacent to where the concert series is, don't have to take place in St. West Square. So I approached my, uh, back several weeks ago about the idea of extending our already approved outdoor dining up to the sidewalk, we already have city pool for that, to, um, if the city weren't inclined to close down Conne Street, which everybody involved agreed to do that, with the series, would it be permissible for the Proper Pig on those four evenings to extend our outdoor dining, uh, the same, you know, side boundaries, but go out halfway into Conne Street to allow for vehicles, in the case of emergency, pass by if need be. And so after a lot of discussion with the police chief and auction rec and the city, Mike thought it might make sense for me to come ask for the city council's permission to do that. So I'm here tonight to ask you if you allow the Proper Pig to extend its already pre-approved outdoor dining area to extend out into Conne Street halfway, allow for vehicles to pass in case of an emergency, on the four nights that concert series will be held this summer.
Can I ask you a question? What is your question? Are you gonna block off that street to let Jersey, you know, so that nobody can get down that street by accident?
Correct. So, I don't know if the police chief is still here, but Matt's here. So we've, we've talked about, um, yes, so each morning barriers will be brought down, and we will have predetermined time that the city is asking us to take the lead on that. We, the concert series, um, will block off the upper end, the west end of Conne Street, uh, so that no new traffic can come in, and any traffic that's on there already would, at some point through the day, vacate, so the street becomes empty during the day.
Just one more question, I mean, would be half blocked off or totally?
No, the whole street would be blocked off. The only reason I would only take the dining out halfway is in the heat of the event, if there were an emergency situation that a police car or an ambulance or a fire truck needed to get down the street, we wouldn't have to pull all these people back. There's already adequate room for an emergency vehicle to pass.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, hold us to favor. Resolution one thirty-seven to oh one six.
Move read by summary only.
Second.
All favorites?
A resolution providing for approval of contract for solid waste disposal. This approval will only take effect in the city's contract with the Conscop Energy Recovery Facility, per expired on March one, two thousand eighteen. The city's solid waste advisory committee fully agrees with this proposal, but we understand that the city will need to investigate all options for reduction of municipal solid waste.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any questions? All favorites? Resolution one thirty-eight to oh one six.
A resolution providing for referral to the claim. It resolved by the City Council of the City of Warrnambool acting as municipal officers as follows, according to Warrnambool set architecture, seven oh one of zoning ordinance are possible to amend, the zoning act is hereby referred to the claim, but will come during regulation. Could it be somebody deserves the address now?
Yes.
KSW Federal Regent Union Construction, the City Council resolved the KSW property at two twenty-two College Avenue, accessible parcel sixty-nine dash ten, from commercial C to commercial A. In order to meet setback requirements for building extension.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any questions? All favorites? Order one thirty-nine to oh one six.
An order providing for extension of concourse leases. The FDU ordered by the City Council of the City of Warrnambool acting as municipal officers as follows, that existing leases for parking for two building owners with concourse leases for ten years is more than described below. The lease for ten concourse routes LLC will be extended to December third verse twenty-fifteen. This lease was most recently extended on April one, two thousand eight, Council Order number ten down two thousand eight. Lease for twenty concourse routes HK A property LLC was most recently extended on August second, two thousand five, Council Order number twenty-six down two thousand five, will be extended to December third verse twenty-fifteen.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Mike, you know, listen, I'm prepared for this. Yes. Uh, the most important things you need to know is we have existing lease with Joseph's Steakhouse for a parking area adjacent to, um, the property that they own, because they own the restaurant, Building Courts, and the paved parking area. They quickly ran out of space.
I don't have a concourse.
No, I jumped one ahead. I'm sorry.
You're rushing.
Okay.
We'll be ready for the next one.
I know what you're talking about. Okay.
What's a concourse?
Well, these concourse leases are a little more complicated. So, as a result of the city selling Marshall within the concourse to Colby, the two buildings that have leases with the city for parking in the concourse have to give their approval for our sale to Colby. Why? Because some of their parking rights in those leases extend to that area that we want to sell. So really, the only way we can sell is if they say, we're okay with you selling that lot, we know there's enough parking for our businesses, we'll sign the release providing that you extend our current lease an additional ten years. Both the leases for the Goodwill Building and for the building that was Ames, and for those of you old enough, Zer's. Yeah, for that building, um, there are two leases, one for the Goodwill Building and one for the other building. And so, we, with the action that I hope you'll take tonight, which is very, very important, we will extend both those leases ten years from two oh four oh to two oh five. Very, very important that we finally clear this last hurdle, so we can sell the property to Colby, because this is what's been holding it up. So in addition to the extension of ten years, we're promising to do a few other things administratively, um, in terms of putting up some parking signs, but those are administrative things. This is more significant in that it's a lease which the council controls.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All favorites?
We've talked about the airport.
Uh, the, uh, the, uh, the.
Condrove?
Let's take a moment. Order one forty. Order one forty to oh one six.
An order providing for approval of lease renewal, Joseph's Fireside. It hereby ordered by the City Council of the City of Warrnambool acting as municipal officers as follows, that the city man who offered mining chance leases that could go through the just-in-case may extend the parking lot, provide additional parking vehicles as far as our steakhouse at Heimerdinger. Foundation said these children's property in the Goff Field improvements.
Move to adopt.
Second.
So, a revised copy of the man home, and the proposal lease was just distributed. So the important things that you need to know is we have an existing lease with Joseph's, as I said a few minutes ago, on Rattle Area. They'd like to increase their lease area from about, I think it's fifty-five hundred square feet today, up to thirteen thousand square feet, uh, eighteen. Eighteen seven sixty-two. So it's a pretty big expansion of the parking area to their existing lease. What we're proposing, rather than the lease be as it was, a five-year lease, a twenty-year lease, which is the reason it's in order, because the city council can only approve leases of ten or more years through an order. If it was a lease for nine years, it could be a resolution, but the charter says anything ten or more has to be through an order. So they're gonna expand the parking, they're gonna pay us the rate that you see for the square footage, and they're gonna put up a buffer on the west edge of the parking lot, the faces of concourse. Matt has been working with the owners at Joseph's, so he can ask, answer any questions you might have. I think it's certainly an important thing to do, they're doing very well there, and land is not needed as part of the golf course operation. I mean, that's the first question. Of course, I would give it up land that is integral to the operation of the course.
Is this the land area, young and regular parking lot, we're right? People park anywhere, something like that?
Yeah, exactly.
Is this the same area that they said they were gonna build a second restaurant?
Yes, right.
Wasn't needed, and they decided to deal with that structure.
Right.
All favorites?
One last item, to request of the couple counselors, we'd like to propose a different meeting day. Instead of Tuesday, August second, how about Monday, August first? Tuesday, August second is South End Night Out. The third, Wednesday, is the Taste of Warrnambool. Can be such a good date. Monday, the first, does that work?
Sounds good, sounds good.
Sounds good? Good, good, Monday, the first, it is. Thank you, that's all I have.